Mr. Fox, do we have any other?
Yes, we do, sir. The resolution plans are recorded in this meeting. The council wants to take that up.
Yes, sir. That was tabled at our last meeting. Is there a motion to remove from the table and place on the floor? There is a second.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilor Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilor Reddick?
No.
Councilor Low?
No.
Councilor Hare?
Yes.
Mayor Druck?
Hi, is Tana Bryant...
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Yes. Okay, so this is removed from the table and placed on the floor. I will note the presence of Tana Bryant. We had a public hearing previously on this exhibit. I will go ahead and read the affected addresses again now. Those addresses are Zero George Street, 119 Boundary, 181 Avery Drive, 201 North Street, 220 East Third Street, 429 Williamson Avenue, 405 West 31st Street, 415 West 31st Street, 501 Williamson Avenue, 506 Front Street, 730 Byrd, 717 West 18th Street, 1118 Farron Avenue, 1125 Farron Avenue, 1325 West 12th Street, 1823 Thomas Avenue, and 2514 Walnut Avenue. I will note that at the previous meeting wherein this resolution was tabled, there were some questions as to some specific addresses. Now that this is on the floor, council discussion.
What was the address? I can't pull up addresses. Oh, 501 West 19th Street. Oh, 501 West something. This is a trailer. I know we had it on here last time. 501 Williamson Avenue. Nissan in Auburn View. I don't see it in the picture. That's what I said last time. It's on the sheet, but it's not in the picture.
All the pictures have it in the...
It's in my picture.
It's in your picture. Fuck this. Nissan?
Nuisance.
Nuisance of a picture.
Don't say Nissan. It's a nuisance.
Yeah. That and the... What's this? Here on 180. Better miss again. Third one is red car.
181 Avery.
181 Avery. How you know it's in Auburn?
Let's do this. It's Ms. Bryant here. Ms. Bryant, would you please come to the podium? Thank you. If our record, this is Tana Bryant, our code enforcement officer.
How you know this vehicle is in Auburn?
The owner had told us that it was, and they had gotten it fixed. We went and talked with her yesterday. We also noted the current tags, insurance, and they proved that the vehicle was audible.
Okay. So it's not on the list now?
No. Our case is closed on it, but it was too late to get everything to you guys because we have to turn him in a week prior.
Okay. That's what I'm talking about.
Any additional discussion? Hearing done. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you. Councilor Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilor Reddick?
Yes.
Councilor Low?
Yes.
Councilor Hare?
Yes.
Mayor Druck?
Yes. Okay, our only resolution that we'll take up tonight is one which was removed from the consent agenda, and it is a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with an architectural firm as to the mural building. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fox? Okay. Is there a motion for passage and adoption?
Sub move.
There is a second. Second. Council discussion.
Well, as I stated before, this is a $17,000 request to get this architect to check to see if this building can be utilized or should be utilized for... For what? Okay, what's it trying to use it for?
It's gonna be a part of the Freedom Riders National Monument.
And who made that determination?
That was the lady by the council.
Did it make that a part of... I don't know, we accept the building?
This was a part of the conversation. But...
There's a conversation. There was a vote on that?
Yes, sir.
And I want to see those minutes. I don't recall.
I think it was 2018, but what was it?
Except the building, but not the... That and also...
I mean, 17.
That also, and we're talking using some of the grant funding for this.
Yes, sir.
And what's the reading of the grant? How the money came to utilize this?
Well, the National Park Service said it is eligible to be used for this particular building.
Is that in writing?
Yes, sir. I'm pretty sure it is.
You're pretty sure? Can you assure it to me?
Yes, sir. That's why I said I'm pretty sure. I'm not gonna be saying I'm possible. Again, this was already vetted through the council.
But it wasn't vetted in writing. It was vetted, I mean, just come through the council. I mean, it came through us, but not vetted. It just came through us. It was a part of the council. But I asked, is it in writing that we can utilize the fund for this particular building? For that? Is that in writing? I think I asked something for that.
Yes, it is.
I will get you a copy of the grant agreement that we have with National Park.
I asked for that at the last work session about that grant agreement. Where is it? You guys see right there?
This is the form for the architect. The A and the...
I'm talking about the...
No, I'm saying, yes, what this was. This is what this is.
You know, last week, we voted down a building for $17,000 to for economic development out of West Anderson. We voted that down because we asked for, we need this in writing, this in writing, this in writing, that in writing. And now, I don't see anything in writing about this. Now, we see our authorization where we either legal or us even do that. But yet, we're ready to jump off and do that. So I don't think we should be voting for this without some type of paperwork and structure. Who is the architect that we're looking at? And who's that agreement? Who's that? I mean, we're held to different standards when we're doing certain things in West Anderson and the South Anderson. We just flippantly go through some stuff. I'm gonna address some more things later on. When it comes, we just pour out money to other people for other areas. But when it comes to us, the basic and fundamental things that we're needing in our community, it always has like pulling, getting a needle out of the haystack. That shouldn't be. And this, I don't think this has been vetted that we're gonna utilize this area as a part of the civil rights area for incoming or welcome station, anything of that nature with the community. This is something that the council decided to do. The council decided to do. And I do think when we're vetting and talking about civil rights, that the community should be involved every step of the way. That's why, that's what we're doing with the Dr. Satchel Leadership Health Institute, Civil Rights Museum, and Institute, and the Senior Citizens Center. But this is something, other people have these buildings. We didn't even ask whoever purchased that building. They purchased it and thought, it's a good idea, let's just get it. So I'm just saying that what's good for the goose is good for the gander. If we can't get $17,000 to get something that's gonna be economic development, that's gonna improve our community, this is not doing anything for this building right here.
This is... It says expire. This is going beyond...
I'm wrapping it up.
Please, please, please. It's going beyond three minutes.
And a lot of people go beyond. But in that final amount, you know, I think we're doing, we should be getting just as much opportunity to write, to vote, and get things in our community as we're doing things around this bus station.
Any additional discussion?
Yes, as a... And I'm doing this as a matter of principle because, you know, we were forced to take this bond, the $3 million debt on this city. And, you know, Councilman Little wanted to use his, fuck, the money that he was forced to take to do some development in his district. And we're being told, you gotta have a well-thought-out, written plan with, you know, basically, they want an engineer study without giving us the money to get an engineer study. They want this and that, you know, not in those words, but, you know. And this is seven, same amount for just to look at a study on what we may be able to use a building for. So we're spending more to look at what a possibility for a building is than we are for a building that we can use for development. I remember being told we should buy this property next to the middle school. We paid six figures for that property with nothing more than a promise that if we buy this property, it could be used for development. It hasn't been developed. There's no development happening there. So we spent six figures for one person to say, oh, this is going for development. And then we come out with a plan because it hasn't been put together and created with an organizational skill that we're not allowed to even have the money to do. We can't even get, we can't even get a pass to get an economic study or engineer study of any of that because you gotta get the council to pass the budget. So as a matter of principle, I'm not voting for this. You know, give us the opportunity to develop our district because we never blocked anything in your districts. And then you say, we need this for this. And we say, okay, we need to get a swimming pool cleaned out. Fine. You know, but then when it comes to us, hey, we wanna start a spur of economic development in West Anderson, then we need a well-thought-out, well-written, uh, plan. I'd rather somebody come and take action on a poor plan because a poor plan executed over time can be successful, no matter how well-thought-out something is if you never take action. So let us take some action in our district. Let us develop our water. That's all we're asking for. Thank you.
For those of you who weren't here last week and did not hear the comments, this contract is a requirement through the National Park Service. It is a federal grant. It is federal money. It is not coming out of the general fund. The $17,000 that they mentioned, the property was sold two years ago for $350, and now we're being asked to pay $17,000 for it. And I ask, where is this money going? And I hope all of you are asking that too. Where is the money supposed to be going? But that's all I'm going to say about it. Thank you.
Any additional discussion?
This property was sold. It was redeemed for taxes. We sold, so I think we should look into that too because if somebody sold this man's property he already owned for the amount of money he owed in taxes, somebody committed a crime. So I wish our city attorney was here because I believe that's a crime, correct? Who's the city, who's the attorney that drafted that deal to sell that person's property he already owned? That's the term for that. We call that the loan con. That's what con artists do. They say property you already own or property they don't own. So we just sold this man a piece of property we didn't own?
Any additional discussion?
Well, like Paul Harvey said, I'll tell you the rest of the story. The man, the city stole the man's property for $350 in stonewall fees. That's what they did. Stonewall fees. The city stole the man's property. Stonewall fees. The man came to David and I, asked me to get his property back. We pushed to get the council to give him his property back. He paid $350,000, $350 for a stonewall fee. Then the city didn't buy that property. So somebody ought to get their facts straight. We're talking facts. Get your facts straight in doing so. Now, the real question, so that man owned that building. The building, the property appraised for about $2,000, about $19,000, almost $20,000. The building appraised about $44,000. He's gonna sell it to us. His kids, the man is dead. They lying on him. He's not here to defend himself. He's dead. They lying on him like a rug, flat-out lying, lying on him. And he did not, so he did not pay the city $350 for the building. So they asked, where's the money going? Money's going to his kids. That's where it's going. The $17,000, like we paid money, $500,000 to do a project in East Anderson. Where that money is going? To somebody's property, help them to get some sewer and stuff into an area, which I don't mind. The question is, where are the $26,000, $23,000 that Downtown Development Authority voted to give to your husband and his business partner? That's the question. The other question is where the, where the, where the addition of about $120,000, $100 for the English Village you went to that you requested? We're gonna soon find out. Because everybody gonna have their day in court. Because in West Anderson, South Anderson has been oppressed by this council. Prior council, it has been, it is corrupt. Certain people on this council, them and their family, getting funding, public funding, going to their business and their entity, they're getting that. And it's also West Anderson, South Anderson has been redlined by this council. That's a different term. Stop looking at the clock. I can see it.
Well, that's my job, Mr. ...
Well, your job is to give some people some money to help them out in the community too. You're not doing that. So it gets your jobs tied together. But I'll tell you what, everybody around here gonna have their day in court. We're gonna see to it that West Anderson gets its share of money because you are paying money back that this council borrowed. $2.6 million went to industrial park out there on the Ford out there. $2.6 million. Nothing out there but air. Now, where that money went to, we shall soon find out.
Any additional discussion? Hearing done. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilor Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilor Reddick?
No.
Councilor Low?
No.
Councilor Hare?
Yes.
Mayor Druck?
Yes, the resolution is approved. Our only ordinance tonight is one that is on its second reading, and it is amending Chapter 26 and 1/2 governing small cell technology facilities to adopt permit and license fees. I would say for the benefit of the public, and this does just essentially establish fees, permit application fee of $200, a permit issuance fee in the amount of $100 for each support structure, and an annual license fee in the amount of $270 for each support structure. And some of these apply to rights of way, and there's a different set of regulations as to private property, but the license fees are the same. We, there was a motion which passed to read by title only two weeks ago. Is there another such motion tonight to read by title?
Sub move.
There is a second. At this time, I will call a public hearing on the issue of reading the ordinance by title only. Does anyone wish to be heard as to that issue? There appear to be none. I will close that public hearing and ask the clerk to call the members on the issue of reading the ordinance by title.
Councilor Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilor Reddick?
Yes.
Councilor Low?
Yes.
Councilor Hare?
Yes.
Mayor Druck?
Yes. Mr. Fox, could you just please read that ordinance by title?
Yes, sir. Amending Chapter 26 and 1/2 governing small cell technology facilities to adopt permit and license fees.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Is there a motion for passage or adoption?
Sub move.
There is a second.
Second.
Council discussion.
How do we determine these fees? How are these fees determined?
A lot of most of these fees are mandated. I know one of the ones is mandated by the state.
The license fee. It's mandated by the state.
Yes, sir.
And I think we looked at other cities' ordinances as well.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Correct.
How do we do it?
Other cities and some are mandated.
And most of the city has a $100, $200?
Yes, yes, sir. And the $207,000, I'm pretty sure is mandated. That's where it is.
Yeah, that's mine.
Yeah, right.
That's our other fee. That's the minimum, maximum, or in between?
That $270 is the maximum fee allowed by the state.
Any additional discussion? Hearing done. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilor Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilor Reddick?
Yes.
Councilor Low?
Yes.
Councilor Hare?
Yes.
Mayor Druck?
Yes, the ordinance passes. Mr. Fox, are there any other additional or other matters that may come forth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we will begin our informal public comments course of the meeting. If you would like to make an informal public comment on a matter which the same answer jurisdiction, please step forward to the microphone. In accordance with all rules, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. If you would, when you step forward, if you would state your name and address for our record.
Man Ray, 3514 Alholl Road. And I've been sitting here for the last couple of meetings, and I have to say this. Mr. Roman was a good friend of ours, and he taught school down in Monmouth. You know, we had some good times down there. Because here, someone saying, we paid $350 for the property, we turned it over, and you know this misleading. You, when you take something from a person, whatever you're paying, what is the value of the property? You don't go by what you're paying, what is the value? You ripped the man off of stonewall, and it was a campaign against not taking this stonewall because you're gonna be trading people property. That was said upfront. You took the man's property. You were kind enough to give him what you paid for his stonewall fee, but you didn't pay for the property's value. So this is very misleading. You did not pay the man for his property's value. And so if you're not gonna do something, just gonna do it. But don't lie on the man. And don't lie on the family. And if somebody's trying to steal $17,000, when you done stole hundreds of thousands, $500,000, and all of this kind of stuff, I just wanna get that off my chest. And another thing, at the end tomorrow, you sit there and this lady on a DUI that she never received, we go out in the same court tomorrow, and I hope he put her in jail. The woman paid her three statements. She paid two and the other, she had, she showed her life. I hope he have enough nerve to put her in jail so we can go as his life that prosecutor and also Will Clay. Will Clay, the one that's supposed to have been her attorney, the woman up there defending herself, and then Will Clay talking about he did it. It is sad for y'all to sit here and allow citizens to be railed on it, and then you wanna say, what can we do to work things out together? Even when Tyler Murphy was on the police force, he robbed people, pulled out guns on these, got terminated, lied, and we still fighting that ghost. And the police say he was a good officer. And good to who? Not the black folks. And I'm gonna say right there, saying something that's holding me back is that they call some black. And I feel that way on this council. And just hopefully, the next council will be able to get someone to bring this city together and let them matter, that don't just go with the whites all the time and, you know, that let go on the black side every now and then. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to be heard during the informal public comment period? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Kim Exum, from West Anderson. I have a problem that I'm having with the Amiston Police Department, with the Amiston Police Department. They are looking for my son, but they harassing my family. They came and, I don't think I can explain everything in three minutes, but they came to my home saying that they was the marshal, which they wasn't. Ran checked my house. They been four times, refused to show me any kind of thing to check the warrants, any kind of warrants. And I have my grandkids I'm raising in my home. They got guns drawn on them, made them go outside in the cold with no jackets. I'm being harassed, and I wanna know what can I do about the city police, Amiston City Police and the problems I'm having with. I can't do anything about what my son is doing because he's grown. They have my car, won't let my car go, and they said they gonna hold it until I tell where he's at. I don't know where he's at. They said they gonna come to my house every day until I tell them where he's at. If I knew where he was, I would tell them. But I don't think they know. So you're holding my car. I end up just saying with that, when I go to Birmingham twice a week, I have the council appointment today because I don't have my car. They're holding my car, and I can't afford for them to hold my car no two or three weeks. And I can't afford to get it out right here at Christmas and try to raise three grandkids. And I really don't know what to do. I'm frustrated. I don't, I don't know what to say about them coming to my house lying. They have been to my house four times in a day and a half. They haven't found my son. But they said they gonna keep coming. That's not right. That's not right at all. Because they don't want me, they want my son. I can't do, I can't, I can't explain or take the blame for something my son did. He's grown. So why do my family have to be punished? And then they gonna lie and say, well, if you tell me where your car is, you can get your car back. I found out where my car was. And then they say, you're not gonna get anything. We gonna hold it until you tell us where your son is. And I wanna know what can I do about it? That's about as much as I can say in three minutes. I know I don't wanna go over the time, but I need to know what can be done about them harassing me and my family and my grandkids. They're pulling guns at them. I mean, they had them drawn on them, how they were making them come out the house.
Your grandkids?
Yes. Yes.
Ma'am, it has been my experience, Chief Lieutenant, to see your captain Bowles are here, or is he...
Well, maybe they can give me an answer.
Well, then, I think that they do fairly investigate and...
When I opened the door and I said, my son is not here, I don't care if you're coming out, you and your family are coming out. I said, well, do you have a search warrant? No. They showed me something on his personal phone and said, well, this is what we got. I wear glasses, bifocals and that. I said, sir, I can't read what's on your cell phone. He said, when it's too bad, you come on that house. And if you don't come out, you going to jail. That's what he showed me and my family.
Those kids, and it was cold?
Yes, they had just took a shower, and they had to stand out with no jacket in the cold for about 15, 20, 30 minutes. My whole family, they wouldn't even let them get a jacket.
Mr. Fox, can you look into this and make sure the procedures were done?
Captain Bowles, would you go there? We're looking at this. Yes.
And see, and see how the car was, was the car towed?
Yes. And it's towed.
We'll get some answers. I would, give a cat to Bowles and he can get your information. And I'll catch you tomorrow. Captain Bowles, if you have any information, please.
That's Captain. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Does anyone else wish to be heard during the informal public comment period?
Did you see some greetings to everybody? I had a lot that I wanted to say, but I think this one thing will address most of the things that I had on my mind. Young lady that stood up here, she had some real problems that she was addressing, that she was dealing with, and evidently, it was so serious, it spilled out into the hallway. Now, as a city council of diverse, a diverse city council, you know, we got white, black, white, black, white, you know, you can't get, you can't mix it up no better than that. If we gonna have a city and things are gonna get done in a positive way, we gonna have to learn how to make sure that the whole body gets taken care of. Us as human beings, we have our system. If if us as human beings, we have a s- our system, we have a circulatory system, we have a respiratory system, we have a different system in our body. But we can't, uh, you know, God saw fit that that one part of the body just didn't get more than the other part. He fixed us in a way that every part had to get the same amount of attention in order for the body to work like it's supposed to work. If you don't give it, if blood goes through our veins, every drop of blood in our veins goes to every part of our body every day, all day long. It just didn't go to the foot, or just didn't go to the hand, it goes to the whole of your body. And in order for the body, if you don't uh let it circulate the way it's supposed to be, next thing you do, you're gonna have to have some amputations. You're gonna have to cut something off. You cut something off, the body's not right. I heard something a minute ago about, from this lady, I was having this problem, uh, police come to her house. And, you know, I asked, uh, months ago about a citizen review board or something, you know. I don't see going to the police chief or nobody that asks them to check on their own people. You know, I think that needs to be an outside entity that comes in and and make sure that things are done right. So, you know, we we gotta stop throwing spaghetti against the wall and see if something sticks. You know, we just gotta purposely start doing things in this city, you know, and 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 gentlemen back here wants me in to resign, you know, that what his sign said. I have signs saying, well, somebody holding me back. But, you know, in order for us to get these things to the point that we don't have to have signs, we gonna have to learn how to work together, to live together, and make sure that our whole city is taken care of, not just when you want something for your car, but to make sure that his part, and your part, and your part, everybody's part is taken care of, and and we won't have to worry about these other things. You know, a a hit dog gonna holler. You throw a rock into a pack of dogs, the only one gonna holler is the one that got hit.
Does anyone else wish to be heard during the informal public comment period?
I do.
Yes, ma'am. If you would again, I wish champion, but just for a break.
My name is Wanda Chandler Chapman. Uh, I don't live in the state of Amiston. I live in Tyler County. I cross the line, right across from my point. And I don't want y'all to put a Band-Aid fix on the homeless situation in Amiston, Alabama. Yes, it's good. What I saw yesterday on Facebook about the brand new homeless shelter. But we got a building for twenty five thousand dollars on West Kent Street and Laguard Avenue, a warehouse, perfect floors and everything. If anybody seen my picture on Facebook. All you need is like a women's homeless shelter over in Birmingham that I stayed at one time. It's a mattress, but down on the floor, until you can zip that and get to bed. You get these homeless people off the street, for every day you stack mattresses up, that way you got floors placed. That's the way the women and children get over there in Birmingham. A bottle of sheets, bedding, pillowcase, and that's the start to get them off the street. I was told. No place to lay my head. I was taught this through a video that I've got home from Badgers Church that I used to go to, no place to lay my head. And we're all one paycheck away from being homeless out on the street. I don't care how powerful you are, or how rich you are, or anything else. You're on one paycheck, but we don't need a Band-Aid fix to the homeless situation. There's another building down here, seventeen thousand five hundred, and I'm sure the man, if you negotiated with him, he'd take right by Superior Gas that little building there, and it could be turned into a women and children's shelter. Okay, that's two buildings, right there across from the Salvation Army, and out here on Laguard West Kent Street, right across the by道. Twenty twenty five thousand dollars. Y'all got one point three billion is what I saw in the newspaper, okay? I'm not counting the five hundred something that's added to it of CDBG block grant. And when y'all take the homeless situation here, and you wanna do a Band-Aid fix, yes, it's gonna be cold for the next three nights down in the freezing. Wednesday morning, Thursday morning, Friday morning. And we know what the news and weather says in the valleys is even colder. Believe me, I know. I used to live in a sixty model school bus. I used to live in a seventy model school bus. I stayed in a camp for one time that half of it tore up. You could only eat it with a kerosene heater. That's all heck. Can you imagine being laying out there, twenty eight degrees, temperature lows at night, and still can never get warm with a kerosene heater? But that's all one to have. That's all one could afford was a sixty model school bus. I got a little home I live in now, but I've stayed at homeless shelters across this country where I've taken homeless people. A sixteen year old boy reunited him with his daddy. He hadn't seen since he was two and a half, back in July two thousand two. I took a black homeless family from Marietta, Georgia, the Musk Ministries I told y'all about through Facebook, social media. You wanna set a program up for homeless, drive to Marietta, Georgia and find the Musk Ministries over there. You go see how late they want to stay.
I I very much appreciate your comment. Just if you could, your three minutes has expired. Just just a few more seconds, if you could, please.
Okay. Are y'all gonna put a Band-Aid fix, or are you gonna put a permanent fix on the situation regarding the homeless situation? And we need to get something permanent, if you're gonna use the Glendale Community Center, not just something that's gonna be opened up for when it gets colder. Now, give me an answer right quick.
Again, thank you, Ms. Champion, for uh the comment. No, we 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 are looking for a long-term solution. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's all you need is a hat, bed mattress, blankets, sheets, and pillows.
Okay. Thank you.
You don't need a bed.
Thank you, Ms. Champion.
And we can get these homeless people off the street. Y'all had since February eleventh, two thousand nineteen, this year.
Yes, ma'am, and we appreciate your comments, yes.
I got more.
Does anyone else wish to be heard during the informal public comment period? Okay, they're appearing to be done. Let's move on to uh council comments as we have no formal public comments tonight. Mr. Jenkins, let's start with you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. Uh, just wanna say congratulations to our U eight um football team, uh, finished. Thank you. Uh, that's why I hesitated. They finished third in the nation. Uh, I don't know if anybody noticed that, but our kids, uh, knocked off a team from California to finish third. Uh, so very proud of those guys. I know we're gonna get them here, and President, thank you for your guidance and leadership with those, and Stephen, you as well. Uh, and uh, I certainly appreciate the coach and uh and those young young men that really work hard to get to where they are, so very proud of them. Other thing I'd like to say is I'd like to send my condolences to the family in Lawrence County. That mother bothered that lost, and uh, seven year old son that was critically injured. And there's nineteen year old daughter there too that uh is left uh to pick up the pieces, so let's please keep her in our hearts and minds. Thank you.
Mr. Reddick?
We got less than a year left, you know, November, next year, but November of twenty twenty, it'll be a different council up here. Um, let's try to impact. Let's do something good with this last year. Let's let's walk, let's walk away with it, saying we achieved something. I don't know how many of us is coming back. I don't know who even wants to come back, but let's 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 leave on a high note. Let's let's do something, you know? We don't have to resort to dragging people that's passed on, dragging a dead mentor for the city, dragging his name through the mud over a seventeen thousand dollar piece of property. Man just did good things in this city. Man dedicated, he coached kids, he he was a high school principal, is a is an educator. He he mentored many people. He mentored me. We don't gotta drag this man's name through the mud because we're trying to uh do something. You may disagree with what we're doing, but let's 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 do something. You know, we've been begging, begging, just not not give us extra, not give us more, but let us use what we already have to impact our districts, our communities. So at the end of this, are we gonna be able to hang our head high and say we made a difference, we made an impact? We 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 re um revitalized the section of the city. Can we say that? Can we say we brought in any major business? Or is our budget any higher? You know, we got a thousand things in the works, and we just completed two of them in the next, you know, ten months. We can walk away proud. Let's let's do that. Let's let's not walk away angry and bitter and blabbing each other over over petty things because, you know, whether we make the greatest decision to make the greatest business that ever happened, or we just do something and just help a couple of people, let us do something. Just do something. You know, and I appreciate it if y'all drag this man's name to the mud. It's it's, that's, you know what? That's corruption. When you selling a man his own property, I wanna find out if he he paid a fee to get that property back, because if he had to pay a fee to buy that property, then whoever took that fee need to go to, need to stand before a judge, because that that's corruption. It's part of the RICO thing. Uh, that's what they used to um take the mob now. RICO, organized crime, and and if we're doing this to people, it's it's organized crime. And whether it's the city or whether it's the mob, when you stealing from people, you're holding a group of people down, you're oppressing people. It's corruption. And and just, I mean, I know one day we gotta stand before God for our actions, but can you stand before the mirror and say I did everything I could to try to make a difference in this city, because that's what we all committed to when we ran for this office? Thank you.
Ms. Little?
Ms. Folks, will we clean up that room for the civilians, for the enhanced trail community?
It's available, sir.
It's available?
It's available.
Okay.
All that goes through the process, it's available.
Take the chairs and stuff out? No, just not the table on top of the room for their office, that other room in there.
That other room is the office already.
No, the one is the room, one is the office, but the other one has a table and stuff in there where there would be.
Big table, it's definitely, they use.
Yeah, they want to take all the chairs and stuff out of there for their office so they can put their.
With the table, they table.
Yeah, that big table, yeah, that's standing. Yeah, the other thing, let me, I wanna thank the people that called and was praying for me when I was going through my ordeal about this court deal. And uh, the jurors and the judges, we thank them. You did a great job. And oh, you're gonna hear some things later on. I'm gonna really unfold to you what took place, how shapely that was. And 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 the people that were involved, uh, Kent Davis, and I thank the uh both court enforcement officers. And the mayor may be in there too, and the city attorney. Everybody gonna have their day in court. Right? They're gonna have to pay my attorney fees. We're gonna have some silver action taken, because you're gonna see, I'm gonna unfold that on what took place. It was totally pathetic on what took place, and we're gonna deal with that. And some other things that have taken place in this city. The financial things, they were talking about seventeen thousand dollars for the bill that we're talking, we're not gonna get off of that. You know, this city is gonna have to do something for the citizens of War Three to improve the quality of life and what took place. They're gonna have to do that, and without a shadow of a doubt. Again, oppression, we will add because the two point, two point six million dollars out there that you gave me to pay back. The money that you uh that gave away, a hundred thousand dollars to Chiar Blue, they gave away fifty thousand dollars to Buckley Vet Center. I'm going down and line, give them, give it away, gave it away, and they were supposed to do some reported procedure. They didn't do that. They didn't present, they didn't uh uh plan for that. What they presented, they didn't follow. Because the city, I I just wanna go into it now. I will tell you, the hypocrisy that takes place up here, and we're talking about it's federal, guys. It it is not our tax dollar. Federal money is tax money. So we're spending it over there, so we can't do anything for Westhampton, Southhampton. This was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we, each one of us had. I gave fifty thousand dollars for the five hundred thousand dollar project in Westhampton, in Easthampton. Oh, we wanted to work away, we used seventy thousand dollars out of this, two hundred thousand dollars I had to help us. They didn't wanna do it. Somebody's gonna have, like I said, we don't mind dealing with this because we always had to deal with this for the lungs, and Jim Cruism. Oppression, corruption, redlining. I will approve those three things that take place on this council. And as oppressing our people, now we're talking about the homeless, we are doing something for them. We wanna partner more with the Salvation Army. That's where we wanna, and I, and I'm talking with, uh, mouth, I'm gonna put some money behind, uh, taking some things uh into effect. These people got the money. Our people, and that's our reasonable service for us to do. We deserve that, and I intend to make sure it happens. They talked about a meeting for the forward wall, supposed to take place December the fifth. I don't think anything took place. We had a meeting, a few people there.
Sure, I mean, Little, can you just please the next few seconds?
At least, okay, at least we have one. We're gonna deal with that. That's not going anywhere. Again, it's coming up on the next voting agenda, but we're trying to get a consortium of attorneys here to fight whatever they bring forward, for us to be prepared to deal with what we need to, we need to deal with. Thank you so very much again for your prayers and support, and uh, as former President Reagan said, you haven't seen nothing yet.
Okay, Ms. Harris.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, I I too just would like to wish everyone a happy holiday season, have a great time with uh family and friends, and uh, just let's just remember the reason for the season. With that, I will move that we stand and determine. There a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Little?
What I'm going, uh? No, yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes, Mayor Jordan?
Yes, we are, Karen.